I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can we do a roll call?
Councilmember Engler?
Here.
Councilmember Newman?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Mayor Protam Adam?
Here.
And Mayor McNamee?
Here. Thank you. We don't have any requests tonight, but we have a special presentation. If we can roll into the special presentation, we are going to, let me see, move, we have, we'd like to have Dusty Russell, Economic Development Analyst, to the podium for special presentation on our Business Recognition Program, and introduce our award recipient. Dusty, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor McNamee and City Council. Last summer, the Economic Development Division introduced a new business recognition program to the community. The program is designed to highlight one exceptional Thousand Oaks business each quarter of the year for special achievements or other unique contributions made to the city relating to economic prosperity, sustainability, resilience, or other activities fostering continuous community enrichment in Thousand Oaks. Tonight, we would like to recognize our newest program award recipient. Tarantula Hill Brewing Company first opened its doors at 244 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard in 2019. The brainchild of some of our very own homegrown entrepreneurs and Thousand Oaks High School graduates, Tarantula Hill Brewing Company has become a local favorite as well as a destination for visitors to Thousand Oaks. Tarantula Hill's business achievements have been truly exceptional, but the financial piece only captures part of the story. Tarantula Hill has exhibited great vision and helped to unlock and shed light on important economic potential along Thousand Oaks Boulevard. They have served as an example to other local businesses looking to contribute meaningfully to community enrichment beyond their business plan. Moreover, Tarantula Hill demonstrates to our small business community the importance of agility as a key to resilience and thriving in the midst of an ever-changing economic climate. With that said, Mayor McNamee, I would like to invite you to the podium to share a few additional words and to present the award on behalf of the city. Thank you.
I would like to invite our awardees, John and Ali, do I have it correct? Come on over, join me here. I'd like you to accept this award. There you are. And just don't go anywhere because we'll do a photo op in just a moment. I'd like to thank you for taking time out of your day to come join us here at the City Council. To accept this award, I have to tell you, I am such a fan of Tarantula Hill. It represents and celebrates much of what we love about Thousand Oaks. You had a vision and you made it come true. Your namesake honors the beauty of our natural surroundings here in this wonderful city of Thousand Oaks. You have a vibrant atmosphere in the restaurant and provides an opportunity for its customers to enjoy the climate while sipping our delicious locally brewed beverages and favorite bites. As local owners, you exemplify the entrepreneur's spirit to our residents, and your commitment to the community as well enhances as well as your ability to adapt and meet challenges of operating a successful small business, serves as a model for other aspiring businesses here in Thousand Oaks. We are honored to have you as part of our community. Thank you so very much for being a part of this. Tonight, we are celebrating as a council, as a city, your success. We celebrate in that. We wish you many, many more years of great success here in Thousand Oaks. I would like to ask, by the way, did you bring anything for samples here by any chance? No? Just asking.
After-party.
After-party. Counsel, would you please join me up in front for a photo op if we may? Come on around in front. Follow me. Counsel? Taylor? Adam? We ready? Good? Okay. We have another special presentation this evening. We would like to recognize the fine work of our Public Works Department. City of Thousand Oaks was the first city in Ventura County in 2010 to be nationally accredited by the American Public Works Association, APWA. Since then, the department has been recognized in 2014, 2018, and again, just last month. This accomplishment was made possible through the incredible work of our team does each and every day in our beautiful city. Tonight, via Zoom, we would like to welcome APWA Region Eight Director, Jobin Pakpoor, to present the reaccreditation plaque to the City Public Works Department. Jobin?
Good afternoon, or good evening, council members. I'm sorry I'm not there in person. My day job is in the San Francisco Bay Area, and I'm sure with the rains that you guys have had down there and the rains that we've had up here, we're dealing with some emergencies. Public Works deals and touches almost every aspect of our lives, and I'm so proud to be here before you to present this plaque and this reaccreditation to the City of Thousand Oaks. This is no small feat, and being in the public sector myself for over 25 years, I could tell you, as you know, when we don't do a good job, we get the calls from the citizens and they tell us, and we're not able to service them. The question always comes up, are we doing the best? Can we do better? Are we doing exactly the least minimum that's required? I could tell you resoundling with this accreditation that the City of Thousand Oaks is in the upper echelons of Public Works. I represent the 4,000 members of APWA in the state of California, and there's only 18 agencies in the entire state that are accredited, 178 in the entire nation. This is a very difficult task to go through. It's not easy. It's not a rubber stamp, and it should be celebrated. I congratulate you and the city. 151 separate practices were reviewed in the Public Works Department. They were analyzed to make sure not only do they meet the minimum, but they exceed that minimum. Three model practices in the City of Thousand Oaks will be shared throughout the nation with other agencies, and I want to point those out because they highlight the great work that your Public Works Department is doing. And I'm going to read these off just to make sure I get them right, but the first one is your human resources management and employee recognition. The department and the organization seem to go above and beyond for looking for ways to recognize their employees. This is especially important in today's environment where it's hard to recruit and retain employees. The effort will go a long way in creating a good working environment. The next model practice that will be shared is a risk management and workers' compensation claim. The injury and illness document is a great example that shows how important the employees are to the organization, and employee safety is the utmost importance. And finally, the emergency management and emergency exercises, so true in today's, in the last rainstorms. Excellent job on after-action reporting. The document includes exercise objectives, aligning core capabilities and performance ratings. I can emphasize how important that last item is in getting funding through FEMA after the fact. I want to, again, recognize the Public Works Department for this achievement, the fourth time, as the mayor said, and congratulate the entire city and its staff on this monumental occasion. Thank you so much for your time.
Mr. Pakpoor, thank you very much for this wonderful comments. I'd like to call up to the podium if I may, our Public Works Director, Mr. Cliff Finley. Big hand for him.
Good evening. On behalf of all of the Public Works staff, which was definitely a team effort working on this reaccreditation program, I want to say thank you, but what I really want to thank is the council, because without your support and your recognition of the work that we do, we would not be the Public Works Department that we are. So, thank you very much for that.
I'd just like to follow up with that, Mr. Finley, is that if anything shows the dynamics of our Public Works Department is what the city is going through right now with the incredible rains, flooding, keeping streets open, and our Public Works Department is top-notch, and it's because of your leadership plus the wonderful staff that you have working with you that the people of Thousand Oaks benefit so greatly, and again, my appreciation. I'd like to do the following. Could you please have anyone from Public Works come down and join us? Counsel, please, again, photo opportunity in front. Like to memorialize this with a photograph. Thank you so much for the work that you do. Let's move on to special presentations and announcements. We're going to give, we're going to go to public comments at this point, so I'm going to ask Clerk, Madam Clerk, if you would please.
Yes, I will announce public comments. This is the time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Three individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm going to clarify something that she may have said, I'm going to put it in Kevin language, is that your comments are meant to be directed towards the council in general, which means you do not name specific council members or mayors. You address it to the council in general. I'm very protective about my council members here. Second is that when you have 15 seconds left, I will come and say 15 seconds. Start bringing your comments to closure because you have a certain amount of time and we need to move on with other speakers. As I call you up, I will name the second speaker. If you would notice behind the dais there, there's a chair for you to sit, so that way we can move through this rather quick. Now, first up we have is from our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Adam Haverstock, and next up after him would be Gary Hartum, and if Gary would have a seat in the chair behind, that would be wonderful. Mr. Haverstock, you've got three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor McNamee and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock. I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Cane Valley Chamber of Commerce, here with a few updates from your chamber. First, I wanted to tell you about a new event we are doing. The Chamber of Commerce has a new breakfast event series that we are launching in 2023. We are replacing four of our traditional structured networking breakfasts with new programming. These events will feature panel discussions and speakers discussing various civic and community issues. The first of these breakfasts is this Friday. It is our State of the Chamber, an annual meeting. Our chamber president and CEO, Danielle Borja, will be discussing the work of the chamber over the last year and what is on the horizon for 2023. Our second event is going to be a civic leaders breakfast and will feature a panel discussion of elected leaders in local government. Mayor Kevin McNamee of Thousand Oaks, Mayor Ray Pearl in Westlake Village, and Mayor Chris Anstead in Agora Hills will all be panelists. Additionally, Supervisor Jeff Gurrell in Ventura County will be participating, and we have invited Supervisor Lindsey Horvath in Los Angeles County to be part of the panel. This civic leaders breakfast will be on Friday, February 3rd, at the Courtyard by Marriott in Agora Hills. More information and registration for both of those events More information and registration for both of those events is on the chamber website at canejochamber.org. Next, I wanted to tell you about a new project we're working on. We have a small business development workshop series that we are putting together, and we're calling it Elevate Canejo Valley. This program is a comprehensive training for entrepreneurs to learn how to start and grow an effective business. It will take place as a series of seven educational workshops led by industry experts discussing topics like marketing, human resources, technology, finance and accounting, operations, legal, and the importance of relationships. We are partnering with EDC, the Economic Development Collaborative, and each participant will also get one-on-one consulting services through EDC. This program will be starting in March with a capacity of up to 30 entrepreneurs. Registration information will be up shortly at the chamber's website, canejochamber.org. And I did want to give a shout out to Mayor Kevin McNamee. This program was his brainchild, and we're very much looking forward to bringing the idea from concept to reality. And with that, that does conclude my comments this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Haverstock. Mr. Hartung is not available right now, but will be back shortly. Scott Horn, please step up to the microphone. Welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, city council members, city staff, and citizens of the Canejo Valley. My name is Scott Horn from Newbury Park, Newbury Park Panther alumni, class of 1979. I am a member of the Casa Canejo MAC and a primary author of the research paper-turned-comment letter you all have about the Borchardt Wetland. 18 months ago, when word got out that our city was trying to upzone the property to include structures 40 to 50 feet high and would include between 900 and 1,100 dwelling units, I was so upset that I made a "Save the Wetland" sign and stood on Wendy Drive near the wetlands protesting. I spent the next year researching the Borchardt Wetland. I compiled and presented information. I made slideshows and videos for each time the MAC met. I urge you all to look at the exhibit photos, videos, and documents as part of this project and this reading of the letter. Important takeaways from the letter are: The MAC confirmed that the primary job of the Borchardt Wetlands is for flood control. With a county easement in place that since 1978, any changes to the easement would endanger Newbury Park. The MAC confirmed the existence of the Borchardt Wetland. A public records search uncovered documents confirming it is a USF&amp;W seasonal wetland. So from now on, everyone, everyone, please call it the Borchardt Wetlands, for real. The MAC confirmed that TO's own existing housing elements place restrictions on development at the Borchardt Wetland. It says, and I quote, "The housing capacity was reduced from a theoretical capacity of more than 150 dwellings to only 20 dwellings because most of the site is constrained by existing wetlands and future flood control improvements." Close quote. In the final letter, the Casa Canejo MAC recommends that zoning should remain unchanged. The current zoning with the housing limited to 20 single-family residents should remain in place. That is, with no increase in the density and no structures being higher than two stories, this will be in keeping with the character of the neighborhoods around it. No development is going to happen in the next year, so I propose a win-win for the owner of the Borchardt Wetlands and the Newbury Park neighborhood. Stop plowing under, mowing, and scraping the Borchardt Wetlands. The owner will save tens of thousands of dollars, and by doing nothing, by letting nature take its course, he will be helping the environment and helping the drought. By allowing the vegetation to grow, the roots will help the soil regeneration, water retention, and it will help recharge the groundwater basin.
15 seconds.
The Borchardt Wetland can help us with the drought. In order to be resilient to floods and drought, we need to be able to adapt to the new normal. That means significantly expanding recycling, capturing stormwater, and modernizing conveyance regarding groundwater basins. The Borchardt Wetlands should be part of the solution.
You did that very well. Thank you. Next up, we have Gary Hartung. Gary, please step up to the podium. And Gary, just as a reminder, at 15 seconds, I'll let you know when that is.
What?
At 15 seconds, I will let you know when that is occurring. I'll just say 15 seconds.
All right. I'm here to ask the city to put a petition on the city's website for people to sign who would support the construction of an interstate water pipeline from Washington, Idaho, Montana, North Dakota, Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Illinois to California and the southwestern states. I had another bullet points paper with me, but it's lost in the shuffle papers in my car. But this pipeline is the only thing that is ever going to guarantee California and the southwestern states a minimum amount of water. So, year after year after year after year after year after year, we would have a minimum amount of water, I am quite certain of, to flush our toilets, to wash our dishes, to take a shower, and, most of all, and this should really wake people up, to transport the human waste through the sewage lines. There have been several articles in The Acorn who support, in support of this water pipeline. And there was one or two people within the last two months who said, and these were water officials in LA. They said that they may not have enough water to transport the human waste through the sewage pipelines. Now, that should wake up even a moron. Maybe some morons wouldn't even wake up if they're told that that is a real possibility. So I would like the city council to create this position, and who in the city could I bring my bullet points presentation to about
15 seconds.
alleviating this problem through this project? Can I drop it off at the city manager's office, or?
Let's do the following. We can address that question with the city manager is going to follow up. He'll answer that question right now. But thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you so much, Mayor McNamee. Public Works Director Cliff Finley is here, actually. He can step down and give you a copy of his business card. Public Works Director Cliff Finley is here. He's going to step down and give you a copy of his business card, and that would be the best individual to pass that information along to. That concludes my thought.
Thank you. Next, we have our consent calendar. Are there any items council wishes to pull from our consent calendar? Would anyone like to make a motion?
If there's nothing to pull, I'll move the consent calendar.
Councilmember Adam has made the motion. Go to city clerk. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Newman?
Yay.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Adam?
Yes.
And Mayor McNamee?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0. And your ordinance title is, Ordinance Repealing Section 6-6.302 and 6-6.303 of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code and Adding Chapter 7 to Title 6 of Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Restricting Use and Distribution of Single-Use Foodware Accessories and Standard Condiments, Ordinance Number 1708-NS.
Thank you. We have a community development report from our director. Call up Tim Giles. Tim?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tim Giles, Human Resources Director, pinching for Community Development Director Kelvin Parker to introduce tonight's presentation team. Staff have prepared a high-level status on the Community Development Department's work plan. We understand that there are significant ongoing efforts which are important to the council and the public. These check-ins are a way for us to maintain transparency with what the city is doing. The department provided council with a report in the past year. Being the start of a new year and with two new council members, it's a good time to check in on what has been accomplished and what is coming forward this year. This presentation is intended to be a broad overview, but council will have the opportunity to weigh into the details on these items as they come before you. The item will be presented by some of the leaders of our community development efforts. Patrick Heher, Chief Assistant City Attorney, will present a few new legislative items that will impact the city. Ian Holt, Interim Advanced Planning Division Manager, will talk about our efforts to update the city's development rules and plans. And Steve Kearns, current Planning Division Manager, will begin the presentation to address some of the significant work on projects affecting the public.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Good evening, Mayor McNamee and members of the city council. We're happy to be before you this evening to provide an update on the Community Development Department activities for the past year and touch on the upcoming year. As part of this presentation, we'll be reflecting on some highlights and accomplishments of the department, including expanded workloads, increased permanent activities, and policy changes over the year, resulting in high demand on staff and consultant resources. We will discuss advanced planning initiatives, major projects approved, as well as future work programs. As you are aware, one of the city's council's priorities for the 2021-2022 fiscal year was implementing a new landmaster system. This was accomplished and went live for public use in November of last year. As the public and staff continue to utilize the software, we will be working on configuring additional processes, implementing system improvements, and utilizing the system for managing reporting. Overall, this new LMS system is an asset to both staff and to the public. This slide provides a table demonstrating planning entitlement numbers for the past five years. As you'll note, there's been a substantial increase in the number of applications from 2018 to 2022. It's gone from about 400 permits in 2018 to 1,150 this past year. A rise in the number of ADUs over the years has contributed to this increase, which is about 35% total over that five-year period. Staff anticipates the number of ADU permits increasing over the years, particularly with the ever-changing legislation designed to encourage these units. Of those 1,150 applications that were processed last year, I'd like to highlight five significant ones. A mixed-use project was approved at the former Kingmark site. This site has been vacant since about 2004. Last year, it was granted construction of 13 buildings containing 420 apartments, 50 of which are affordable units in the low and very low categories. At the Baxter Way property, Kennedy Wilston has been approved for construction of 13 buildings, 264 apartment units. 34 of those are within the very low and low-income categories. Also approved this past year was the new biotech campus for Alexandria. This was at 1,100 Ranch Canejo Boulevard. This is a former Amshin property. Additionally, Athens Waste Hauler transitioned into the city, including approval of a new maintenance facility on the Ranch Canejo area off of Canejo Center Road. And the city adopted new development standards and procedural processes for evaluating proposed self-storage facilities and modifications to the existing ones. Now, looking forward, the department will be reviewing six new residential proposals comprising 919 apartment units, which include 175 units in an affordable category. This includes the city's Hillcrest Christian site that was purchased and is going to be a 100% affordable project. We'll also be processing a contemplated hotel at the former Marshall's Clothing Store building in the Janes Marketplace, a new medical building at the former Youngsec Club on Rolling Oaks Drive, 15 new industrial buildings at the Ranch Canejo and Canejo Center Drive location. We'll continue our work on the campus master plan for the Civic Arts Plaza campus, as well as evaluate the navigation center over off Florence Drive. The Building Services Division has also been experiencing a large volume of activity. Last year, they serviced about 9,600 customers at the public counter. This number does not represent those customers assisted virtually or over the phone. Approximately 9,500 permits were issued and over 22,000 inspections conducted involving a total construction valuation of over $250 million. The Building Division also adopted the new California Building Codes, implemented an online permitting system and plan-check process, which has been enhanced by the new land management system. Shown in this slide is a graphic of the permits issued by the Building Division over the past five years. It demonstrates an uptick in the permits issued. From 2018 to last year, we've seen an approximate 30% increase in the activity over that period. So in 2018, we issued 7,418 permits. Last year, it was increased by about 2,000 to 9,500. Activity by the Co-Compliance Division is depicted in this table. It demonstrates a large number of investigations per year with 2,951 inspections that did not turn into investigations. So it was still activity by our Co-Compliance Division, but did not turn into formal investigations. It's important to emphasize on this slide that the number of investigations initiated, none of these are proactive. Every one of these are complaint-driven. So someone actually has to call and interact with one of our staff members to start this process. At this time, I'd like to transition the presentation over to Ian Holt, interim planning manager for the balance of the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Steve, Mayor, council members. I'd like to just touch upon some highlights we've had in the current planning division. As you heard from Mr. Kearns, we had over 1,100 planning applications processed and approved. Also, another stat in terms of customer service, over 6,000 people have been helped at the public counter. Those are the ones that have been logged in. And also, you know, a lot of phone call inquiries as well. In terms of the advanced planning highlights for 2022, first off, we'd had work going with the general plan update. You know, the general plan update is the first comprehensive update that city has embarked on since its initiation back in the early '70s. That includes the nine mandated elements, including some of the new requirements such as environmental justice. In September 13th of 2022, the city council approved a contract amendment for Ramene Associates for additional work required for the general plan, housing element, and the environmental impact report that would cover those elements. The environmental impact report was also scoped to include evaluation of the Climate Environmental Action Plan that the Public Works Department is currently working on. So that would follow concurrently and process with the general plan update. Staff continues the ongoing drafting of the general plan for purposes of internal consistency as well as other statutory requirements. And we continue our coordination with the Public Works Department on integrating the Climate Environmental Action Plan with that work. In terms of highlights for the housing element update in 2022, on the onset of 2022, the city council adopted the housing element on January 25th. We quickly turned around and submitted it to HCD on February 5th. And now, we've received, we received a letter from HCD on April 7th, 2022, and we're working on those revisions, of which that contract amendment has enabled us to commence on. Another item that has been initiated and is ongoing is the Inclusionary Housing and Linkage Fee Update. We basically, we went through a selection process for consultants and did a contract award, and we had the first workshop of the city council. award, and we had the first workshop with the city council on November 1st. And we'll continue to work on that as I go over the 2023 work plan. As far as items that were concluded, we had the objective standards. These are the residential design standards adopted by city council on February 22nd. These basically are in response to a variety of legislation such as SB 35, SB 330, and other bills that just continue to reference subjective standards as the primary tool that cities can use to evaluate residential development and eliminate subjectivity from the decision-making process. Another highlight in reaction to state legislation, the California Home Act, SB 9. We adopted the ordinance for that, so amended the municipal code that enabled applicants to go through that process ministerially as required by state law, which allows up to four-unit developments and urban lot splits. And that was adopted by city council on October 25th. So looking forward into 2023, one of the foremost priorities of my team is responding to HCD's review of the adopted housing element by city council. And just as a little bit of a background for the housing element, you know, the work on the housing element really couldn't commence until, you know, the city council endorsed the preferred land use map back in May of 2021, because that basically allowed us to evaluate where we could put housing sites moving forward. So, and just for perspective, you know, as part of the housing element process, it's not uncommon for jurisdictions to go up, go through three rounds of review with HCD. Right now, we're responding to our second letter from HCD. But overall, you know, in terms of Ventura County, only three jurisdictions are certified at this point in time. And if you were to look at the whole SCAG region, which includes Imperial, LA, Orange, Riverside, San Bernardino, and Ventura Counties, 86 out of 147 jurisdictions are certified. So we're not alone in this, you know, process of seeking certification of our housing element. So, you know, staff is continually, we're actively working on addressing HCD's comments. We're anticipating resubmitting a revised housing element to HCD within the month if all goes well. And we're looking forward to receiving a constitutional certification of that as part of bringing the general plan to the city councils for their consideration. One of the other components I would like to touch on as part of getting certification for the housing element, one of the tools that the city will have to adopt to actually get full certification is a rezoning program. And since the majority of the housing sites identified in the housing element aren't currently zoned for residential, the plan is to bring forward a mixed-use zoning ordinance, because currently we do not have one in our municipal code, for adoption at the same time that the housing element is presented to the city council for adoption, so that in turn, with the adoption of a mixed-use zoning, we could get a quick turnaround on a full certification of the housing element. So that's the first and foremost priority in terms of 2023. However, at the same time, we will be working forward on our path to adopting the general plan within the year. So staff's currently, we're working on drafting the general plan, all the various required elements and so forth in terms of, you know, the statutory requirements, internal consistency, and also working with our consultant on drafting the program EIR. You know, two of the kind of benchmark time periods moving forward is the spring 2023, that's when we anticipate releasing the draft general plan, and the Climate Environmental Action Plan in concert for a public comment period and review. During that time, we anticipate doing a variety of public engagement activities, reaching out to stakeholders and a variety of other groups who we've met with during the land use map alternative processes, and then also presenting the draft general plan to the General Plan Advisory Committee, as well as the Planning Commission and the city council for workshops during that kind of public review period. Once we have, you know, the feedback that we've received from the various committees and the council, as well as the public input, we'll take a look and see what can be, you know, adjusted as needed into the draft general plan and make sure then that would be consistent with the following release of EIR for public review. So kind of a two-phase for the spring in terms of really getting the general plan out there and getting feedback from the public as well as yourselves, and then moving forward to the EIR. And then with anticipation of bringing forward the general plan, the housing element, and the mixed-use zoning package I've mentioned previously for a public hearing and adoption. So, and as I mentioned before, there are some efforts that are going to be continuing. One I wanted to touch upon is the Inclusionary Housing Program and the Non-Residential Linkage Fee Ordinance Update. There will be a department report coming up soon, tentatively slated for the end of February, where the consultants' financial feasibility, as well as NEXUS studies, will be presented to the council, as well as some initial staff recommendations in that first quarter. Ultimately, we would return to the council for the draft ordinance adoption of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance and NEXUS, I'm sorry, not the NEXUS, the linkage fee, ordinance come spring as well. So, a lot going on in spring. The other items we have, the following four bullet items are really actually kind of post-general Plan work program items. You know, after the general plan is adopted, there are a variety of specific plans throughout the city will need to be updated for internal or consistency with the general plan, as well as new specific plans for certain geographic areas that would be considered as part of that draft general plan, you know, for those to implement the vision of the general plan. And we anticipate, you know, as well as what's identified in the housing element already with a variety of code updates in response to state legislation, you know, each year we have a new slew of laws coming down that we may have to amend our codes to adjust that. And then ultimately, as far as just housekeeping in terms of the municipal code, there is a comprehensive update as well for, to make sure that all the zoning aligns with the land uses and the general plan policies.
So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Patrick Heher to cover some of the legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So the 2022 California Legislative Session in Sacramento resulted in a slew of new land use bills that continue the state's strong push to address the housing crisis. While there are at least 20 bills that could impact our city's development strategy or our development processes, tonight I will briefly summarize a few significant ones. And as I go through these bills, I think you will see the continual theme that the state legislators have created regarding creating new incentives for developers to build more housing, including affordable housing, of course. Next slide, please. So the first bill I would like to address is AB 2011. This is Development on Commercially Zoned Lots. And this is significant because it is a streamlined process bill. It allows by right or ministerial housing development in commercially zoned properties based on certain criteria. And as you're going to see with all these bills, there are a number of criteria that a developer will need to meet, but if they meet those things, those items, then they're going to be able to have a streamlined process to develop housing. So under, there are two options a developer may have. The project in one option must be located in a zone where office, retail, or parking are principally permitted use. And in that option one, it would be 100% affordable to lower-income households. It cannot be located within 500 feet of a freeway, and it must meet the city's objective standards. Next slide. The second option, if a project is in the same type of zone, and the site abuts a commercial street between 70 to 150 feet wide with frontage of at least 50 feet. Again, this parcel cannot be more than 20 acres. And then they go through a different scenario based on whether the project's going to be for sale or for rent. If it's for sale, the project can either comply with the local inclusionary housing requirement, or there's a number of percentages that they can meet to, that they must meet for the project, including 30% moderate income. Again, if it's for rent, which we would typically see, you have again the same inclusionary housing requirement if they meet that, or they can do rent at 50% for lower income, 8% for very low, and 5% for extremely low income. And again, this is where, as part of this project, they must pay prevailing wages on all construction. And as far as the inclusionary housing, it will depend on whether the inclusionary housing percentage is higher or the state law under AB 2011 is higher. Whichever is higher, they must produce. The next bill on the plate is AB 2334, and this is a density bonus bill. And I know most of you are familiar with the density bonus law. We have it, it's been on the books for decades now. Our code has an ordinance that reflects the state law. And again, this is another change to the density bonus law that the state is implementing. So under the current density bonus, the existing law mandates that cities allow additional units above the baseline density based on providing a percentage of those units as designated affordable units. The existing law also requires that the cities must provide development incentives or waivers, and that number of how many they get, whether it's one up to four, it just depends on the number of affordable provisions that they're meeting, basically the percentage that they're meeting for the density. To the left of this screen, you'll see, this is just a sample under Government Code Section 65915, which is our density bonus law under the state. And this is just a very low-income example, but you see as you go through that left column that if a developer were to build, for example, 15% of very low income, they get a 50% density bonus. Now, the new law, the new law updates the definition of maximum allowable density to determine the base density. And this is defined as the maximum number of units allowed under the zoning ordinance, specific plan, or the general plan. Significantly, the total units excludes units added by the density bonus. Next slide. In addition, in addition to all these possibilities, if the developer were to develop a property with 100% affordable, 100% affordable, in addition to all those other density bonuses they may receive, including all those waivers or incentives based on the percentage, they can get a height increase of up to three additional stories or 33 feet if the project is located within one-half of a mile of a major transit stop, or located within a very low vehicle travel area. Also, they, the law will prohibit the city from imposing any parking standards on that project if they meet these requirements. Now, as Mr. Holt mentioned just a minute ago, staff is going to need to, as we always do with the density bonus law, need to amend our code to reflect these new changes. Next slide, please. The next item is AB 2097, and this is the elimination of certain parking requirements. And again, this is the theme of trying to incentivize the development across the state. Under AB 2097, it prohibits the city from imposing any minimum parking requirements on any residential, commercial, or other development that is located within the half-mile of a major traffic stop. There are some limited exceptions that apply. Now, under this bill, the city can still impose ADA parking on the site, as well as EV charging supply equipment requirements. Next bill is a combo bill of AB 2221 and SB 897, and this is accessory dwelling units. And one of the reasons why this is a significant bill is because if you saw this, Mr. Kearns' presentation, in 2019, we had 21 applications for ADUs in our city. In 2021, we had 114, and in 2022, we had 149. So ADUs across the state and in our city, we're seeing a lot of applications for that use. So under these two bills, it prohibits the city from imposing certain lot coverage limits, such as floor area ratio, or open space, or even front yard setbacks, minimum lot size. We can impose that if the owner cannot build an 800-square-foot ADU on the property through our regular processes. For example, we have the four-foot setback in the rear, the four-foot setback on the side. So if they can't fit in that, we have to, under this new law, we are prohibited from denying a project, we have to find a way to help them make that project happen. And this is, again, they're given this, a lot of incentives to make ADU process happen in an easier fashion. An ADU that is detached from the primary dwelling may also now be included in a detached garage. And why is that significant? Because if you think about, you know, five or eight years ago, people would take their garage and they would convert it into a room, if you remember those type of situations. And then what we would do is we would require them to create a detached garage. Now, what they're saying with this new bill is if someone wants to take that other structure, whether it's a pool house or a detached garage, and make it into an ADU, they can do so. Another thing that this bill does, or these two bills, it increases the maximum height from 16 feet to up to 25 feet if certain criteria are met, such as proximity to major transit stop. For the example of 25 feet, it would be a two-story if it's an attached ADU to the primary residence. Next slide. So AB 2668, this is a cleanup legislation to SB 35. So SB 35, just for your recollection, was effective in 2018. This was, again, a streamlined permit process. If they meet all these requirements, there's a very strict guidelines that the city must follow in approving the project. It is zoned for residential use or mixed use. It must comply, of course, with the city's objective standards, as Mr. Holt was mentioning. It again requires a prevailing wage component, and 10% of the units are required to be affordable. Now, with that, another change that they did is they wanted to clarify, next slide, please, that the minimum percentage of affordable units is calculated before calculating the density bonus. And of course, it maintains the requirement of prevailing wage per construction or skilled and trained workforce. So with those, these are just some of the several bills that we have. They are very complex. They're, they have a number of processes you have to follow, and staff is going to be challenged in going through those new bills and making sure that when we get in such an application, we're going to follow it correctly. But with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Powers, as he might have some concluding remarks.
Yeah, thanks, team. Just a couple of quick close-out remarks for this, and I know there's some questions from the council, and I think this presentation was designed to elicit some of those questions as we set the table for the, for the year ahead. First and foremost, I just want to credit the Community Development Department. Extraordinary efforts over the past year, it's really remarkable when you look back over what we've been able to, to achieve. We first checked in, I know at least three of you people will remember, we checked in with you in fall of 2021, when we were seeing these numbers really start to get to a level that was almost unsustainable. Now, we put a number of measures in place, contracting a lot of different pieces for plan check review out, allowed us to continue to be a little bit more flexible and nimble. That's paid dividends, but in the meantime, we've only seen the numbers continue to increase. And really what we're seeing is a culmination of so many things coming together at once. We're seeing sort of record development volume, not just residential. Our, the development in our industrial sector is often overlooked. Every one of those new biotech buildings and designs that come in and go through the 15 buildings that Chappelle's bringing forward, all of those have, have to run through a planning process, and so all that's hitting. And then we have our advanced planning processes, which are extremely complex, first time we've done a comprehensive update since 1970, and there's a lot of nuance to that, especially in this day and age. So all of those things taken, taken together, really some key themes, huge and sustained increase in our processing volume. in our processing volume, solar, ADU, or homeless activities, which weren't on the radar necessarily, all require a planning touch, a lot of industrial. An ever-changing legislative landscape that we put on top of all of this, the bills that Mr. Heher just mentioned, just, that was just a quick summary of a few of the most significant ones. But if you imagine, every one of those have to be addressed with some processes and procedures internally, often they'll have to address and modifying things from the council perspective. And so, that makes things increasingly difficult when you're already running at full speed, and then the rules of the game are changing along the way. Fortunately, we are well underway on our general plan process, because we can incorporate a lot of this in there. That commercial conversion bill, much of what the council contemplated in your land use alternative map, sort of aligns with that. And so, I think we're well positioned, as opposed to cities that may not have gone down that path already. So, we're already have some steps in the right direction. We're continuing to leverage some new technology, modifying our processes, and looking to use those outside contracts to balance the workload and help keep things moving forward. As we come into 2023, we felt it was important to set the table for all of you, especially since we have two new members here. There's going to be a lot of community development items. From a pure volume standpoint, Pollock Works will probably win out in numbers, but in terms of consequence of big policy-related items and considerations, there's going to be just a tremendous amount throughout the entire year. And so, we wanted to kind of lay that out for you. And you have everything from residential and industrial to hotel and medical buildings. We've got follow-up on the Hillcrest site. We've got our consideration for our homeless navigation center. All of those things will be coming forward in the year ahead. And then a lot of really interesting policy discussions, from inclusionary housing to our general plan study, policy study sessions, and then the eventual consideration, culmination of that in the fall. As we go through that this year, and we're coming into a budget year, it's important to know all of what we're looking at here is being done under the same resource since we've had in community development. Since about the dissolution of RDA, so, you know, '08, '09, we haven't changed that resource allocation from a staffing perspective. So, our finance director, Jamie Boscarino, and our other leadership in community development, we're going to be looking very, very closely with our financial strategic plan to make some determinations if now is the time to look at augmenting, in a small way, some of those resources in community development, so make sure we're set up in a way to deliver going forward, and also being mindful of our fiscal resiliency. Just a few closing comments. Hand it over to the mayor for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. City team, thank you so much for the great job that you did on this. I'm opening it up to questions here from council, and the first one up is our latest edition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the entire community development department staff for this comprehensive report and for all you do. Thank you. Just a few points of clarification in what we just walked through. In Mr. Kearns' report, there was a reference to the very considerable amount of construction, the value of all that being two-hundred-and-fifty-six-point-six million dollars. And my question is, does that reflect the period 2018 to 2022, or is that just last year's construction?
That goes just last year's. That's the valuation that the contractors provide to us as part of the development process, and it's for determining the permit fees and stuff.
So, as a corrective to anyone who says, "We never build anything here," we can point to two-hundred-and-fifty, more than two-hundred-and-fifty-million-dollar worth of construction that happened last year alone, correct?
That's the construction valuation. Yes, that's correct.
All right, thank you. I think this is a question for Mr. Holt regarding the changes to mixed-use zoning. You mentioned that there would be a new zoning class for that law. And it sounded from the timetable as if the spring period is already very busy with other items. So, number one, do I presume correctly that the mixed-use zoning changes would come after that, after the housing element would be voted on?
Well, for the time being, and ideally, we would take it as a package at the same time that the housing element is adopted. I think that would look well in terms of HCD, as far as our efforts to, you know, upon, you know, an adoption of a conditionally certified housing element, also adopt a mixed-use zoning ordinance that would basically enable a developer to come in and apply for a project per the zoning regulations for those housing sites identified in our housing element.
Part of the reason I'm asking about the order of operations is whether we, as a council, in reviewing general plan update, need to be aware of any changes that need to be made so that we can do these zoning changes to do this new class of mixed-use zoning. In other words, does the general plan or the housing element need to change in any way for this zoning change to happen?
No, because, I mean, the general plan and the housing element are the, basically, the policy documents that would drive the need for that mixed-use zoning ordinance. I mean, it's essentially a tool that's consistent with the general plan land use designations for implementing those zones. So, I mean, basically, the zoning would, yeah, facilitate the production of housing anticipated under the general plan. So, no, it wouldn't, I mean, and that's part of, I mean, when the draft general plan goes out, I mean, you know, the descriptions of the land uses, a lot of those things, I mean, for, at this point in time, really just the land use map and the makeup of the, you know, the city, all the other kind of more specific policies for those designations would be discussed at the time of the draft general plan being out for public review and, you know, considered by the planning commission and city council.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And then I'll wrap up with a couple of legal questions for Mr. Heher. In your presentation on the density bonus law, AB 2334, I'm wondering if you can pull out your crystal ball, if we have enough information yet to anticipate what changes might result? And the reason I'm asking is that there was a fair amount of, figuratively speaking, hair pulling. At the time, we voted on SB nine, on changes to bring us in alignment with SB nine. But staff was careful to point out that while there was significant interest in SB nine, there were very, very few, I think one at the time, of applications that would actually make use of SB nine. And so, I'm asking, does this very significant change to density bonus in law translate into very significant practical changes? Do we expect there to be major changes, or is the complexity of this going to hold that back, as it has with SB nine?
So, I think, not to use a crystal ball, but to just anticipate that part of this AB 2334 was to clarify for some, for some localities that they were possibly mixing up how you measured it, right? And so, this was one to clarify that you look at the density as a whole first before you go to the bonus that you would receive for the size of the property. But I think, again, this is, this is going to be taken in with a number of these other possible projects or paths to a project. And so, the density bonus, and this is what's important, is that the density bonus is going to be used in addition to all these other new incentives, like the parking, for example. Now, under the density bonus, you do see a capability, even currently, of reducing parking or getting incentives or waivers of something setback, for example, you've seen that before. So, you see those type of opportunities. I think the density bonus change is significant in the sense of, it's going to, again, reflect, this is how we're going to measure density, this is going to be how we're going to anticipate the bonus of units. And then to combine that, I think this is what we would anticipate, to combine that with other, another type of regulation that gives them a path to streamlining possibly or to, again, just to build a project that has affordable component.
All right. And then my final question, again, on that law, is just the practical impact of this. We've already upzoned some areas in the city to have a seventy-five-foot height maximum. Is this additional three stories, would that be on top of the seventy-five feet, in addition to seventy-five feet?
So, I want to be careful with that one, that question, and I'm not trying to deflect it, other than I think we gave a very high-level kind of review of these bills. That one in particular is very complex, so you have a lot of area, we just hit some of the highlights of the bill. I mean, each of these bills are, you know, twenty, thirty, forty pages, just the bill text alone. So, we highlighted some of those. So, we have to look at that on a case-by-case basis as to whether or not they would qualify. But I think part of this is to find locations that might be a little bit smaller than, than maybe they would normally consider, and they go, "Oh, if I build one-hundred percent affordable and it's within a half-mile of a major transit stop, boy, I'm going to be able to build three stories higher than what is there." But again, I don't want to do a hypothetical in the sense of, until we know all the facts of a particular project, we have to analyze it. But that's what we will be doing.
Very good. Thank you.
That's all. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Adam. Questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Well, the state seems to be certainly enamored with height and density with this latest slew of laws that they're handing to us. It's really no surprise, though. The housing crisis has been well documented, and the state has decided that they're going to force us, or try, I guess, try to force us, to build more housing, and build it denser and build it higher. I kind of get that in the sense that, you know, in the history of the last couple of decades in California, there's been many cities that have fought growth adamantly. And I might even say that Thousand Oaks might have been guilty of that then. But I do think in the last couple of years, we've turned the corner. And just last year, we approved eleven-hundred units here in the city, one-hundred-and-twenty-five or so were affordable. I think Thousand Oaks understands that there's a housing crisis in the state, and we're responding. And I think if Sacramento had looked at just us versus some other cities, maybe these laws might not have come into play. But unfortunately, there's four-hundred-plus cities in the state of California, not just us. So, we have to contend with this, with this business. I mean, for the ten-odd years I've sat on this council, up until the last couple of years, land use decisions were virtually left to us, almost entirely. And that is changing. So, we have to contend with that. On the first one, that AB, what was it, development on commercial lots, AB what?
Two zero eleven.
Yeah. In our city, what would be an example of a commercial lot that that might be subject to? Would that maybe be in the mall, for example, Oaks Mall?
It'd have to be a, you have to have it as one of the options, a commercial street with between seventy to one-hundred-and-fifty feet wide, so that is a component to it. So, again, this is where I was talking about the high level, kind of just depends, that's certainly a possibility. We'd have to look at the project and see if it would meet those categories. And again, for one of them, it would be one-hundred percent affordable. For another one, it's going to be, whether for sale or rent, then it's going to have these numbers that would be attached to it. But again, this, these bills are, have a number of little elements to it. Again, it can't be more than twenty acres, that kind of thing. So, it just depends on where you're looking at, and it has to be with a commercial street between seventy to one-hundred-and-fifty feet. Now, T.O. Boulevard, for example, is about eighty feet in most sections, so, just, again, it just depends.
Yeah, I mean, some of the wordage seems almost impractical. For example, on the density bonus, that you could add three stories if you're one-hundred percent affordable, did I get that right? I have yet to meet anybody that could build a one-hundred percent affordable project and make it pencil out, you know, profit-wise to do so. Maybe it's possible, I've never seen it, but, so, when you talk about the extra three stories, in our city, that could mean if it was within a half-mile of a transit center, I think was one of the stipulations, we could look at something in maybe the six-to-seven-story range?
If it meet those elements, yes. But I would also say that without these laws, for example, you just mentioned it, that we, in the last year, we had eleven-hundred units that we approved, right? And we're doing that with development agreements. We're doing that with a communication and agreement with the developer to say, "Provide us some affordable housing. We're going to provide you, measure your units, and we're going to help you work through a development process that we can all agree to and do the proper SEQA analysis, and then get these appropriate, very nice, you know, Kmart site, for example, just some beautiful complexes that we are going to have developed in the near future."
I couldn't agree more, yeah. We've worked with the developers to put together good projects. I'm not sure that Sacramento is going to exempt us from these laws because of that, but I guess we'll have to see how time goes on. And then the last one, ADUs could be up to twenty-five feet?
Yeah, so that is a big change. That is going to be where you have, there's a number of factors, again, I hate to say that repeatedly, but it's basically, it's going to be more than two bedrooms in the ADU. It has to be attached to the primary residence, right? So, if you have a two-story building and you can attach an ADU, that's twenty-five feet, up to twenty-five feet high. But it also, it's important that it goes back to the parking and the bus service, because it does have that qualifier as well, that it has to be near a bus stop, right? So, you, within a half-mile, because you're thinking you're going to have multiple people. Because also, they're limiting the, with ADUs, they're limiting the parking that you can require. So, they're trying to balance that, make it a little bit bigger. Eighteen feet is, for example, a detached ADU can be eighteen feet now, that kind of thing.
Sometimes you wonder, because of the reaction of some of the cities to these new laws, for example, a couple of cities trying to subvert, I guess is the right word, SB nine in certain ways, you wonder if Sacramento doesn't look at that. And some of these new laws are almost retaliatory, in a sense, because of some of the, you know, the reluctance the cities have had to cooperate. But whatever, they are what they are, so we're going to have to contend with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adam. Next up, the second council member, who's new to the council, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question more about capacity. I'm going to kind of direct it to you, Drew. You mentioned leveraging tech and outsourcing where we can. If we're expecting, you know, as we're seeing over the years, the rise in ADUs, and we're talking about incentives that ultimately make, I think it's a realistic expectation that we may see more and more build. If that's the case, do we have the capacity to handle that? If not, what is the plan so that we can?
So, it's a, some of a nuanced answer, and I'm going to turn to Mr. Kearns here in a minute to give a little bit more technical detail. But the council, and when we began to see these numbers, the council, we brought them a suite of actions to provide opportunities for outsourced review of different plan sets, to look at outside planning assistance for individual planners on projects that it made sense to do that in, and that's been really helpful for us. That said, the planning profession in general, it is pretty technical in nature, and it's really rooted in the policies of the city council. City council has established these policies, and so, it's our team that understands, there's no other city that has oak tree regulations like we do. And so, to understand what's happening in somebody's backyard, and that requires a person on our team. We're one of the cities, we have policies regarding intrusion into twenty-five percent slope. And so, it's very difficult to outsource a planning application that has those kinds of factors in it. And so, that's why it's one of the few departments that we're going to take a hard look at, adding some additional assistance. It's also a succession planning piece. It's, this is a competitive industry. There's a lot of private sector pull for this industry as well. And so, that's, we're going to, in the budget process here, likely have a conversation with you about that, and probably not just about this one- or two-year budget cycle, but kind of what's our horizon look like? Because we probably want to plan on ramping towards that as we move forward. But Steve, I'll let you add any additional color onto that.
Thank you, Drew. Very good question, Councilmember Taylor. One of the things about the ADU ordinances and the legislation by the state is that it's a very subjective or objective legislation. So, there's not a lot of subjectivity staff can use to evaluate these. It's really a checklist thing. If it meets all the standards, we're If it meets all the standards, we're obligated to approve it. That doesn't mean that they can wipe away all of our development standards, our tree protection, that kind of thing that Drew just mentioned. They still have to adhere to certain development standards and local ordinances. However, the, there is a large volume of these. Although they are objective and you just check the boxes and you approve it or deny it or whatever, the result is, there's still activity. And because of large volume, there is a lot of work on and demand on staff. But we are managing that capacity. We do have contract services we use and that's helping us with the volume, including the other applications that we have in the mix.
And I'll just conclude that with saying, one of the sort of unintended consequences of some of this legislation that you, you probably, you don't think about very often, but a lot of folks read articles, LA Times or otherwise, and they say, oh, there's new ADU law, there's this SB 9. And then they take a look at their property and they say, you know what? I'm going to do it. The amount of folks that we've had show up at the counter, some of which have literally like a napkin, that they've sketched out a, you know, a SB 9 project on and they want to, hey, I need to, I want to process a build on this. And so if you think about that, that's increased volume at the counter, interacting with folks that would never come to the planning counter before. And so that's another piece that we have to plan for from a customer service standpoint. How do we get these things into the right pathway so that we're getting answers to questions and not taking those folks that need to be processing electrical plans away from that task?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mikey? Let's go over to the veteran, Mr. Engler.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of comments and questions, I think, directed to the entire staff. And thank you for the presentation and for your answers so far tonight. It's very illuminating. The, one question I had is, a lot of the, a lot of the new laws seem to be tied to locations near transit centers. And I'm wondering, in our town, can you define what a transit center is? Is it a bus stop? Is it, or does it have to be a regional hub of some sort? How do they, how do they define it in the code now? And do we have any of those in our town?
Okay. So typical with statutory interpretation, you see statutes that sometimes refer to another statute for definition. And in these new slew of bills, you see a lot of that happening when it comes to the transit. And so I think I was very specific in saying major transit stop because that is defined. It's defined in two sections of the code. They're both Public Resources Code Sections 21064.3 and Section 21155. And I say that because when you look at the definitions of those two codes, at this time, I do not believe that the city has any area in our city with the bus service that we have that meets that definition. At this time, I do not believe we have any transit center. That would be the one that you're thinking about, I would be thinking about. And looking at the definitions as written down in these two code sections, I do not believe that we have a major transit stop as defined by these two codes. Now, some of the codes talk about bus stop. And some of those say bus stop is defined as a major transit stop, right? So you just have to look, some of them are silent, it says bus stop. So it just depends on which bill you're looking at and what code you're looking at because it does change a little bit. But for the major ones that I brought out, it is talking about a major transit stop. And under the definitions, I believe at this time, I do not believe that we have one that qualifies.
Okay, so it's a little bit, a little bit in the gray area, but by, by some definition.
Correct. And I say that gray area is a perfect way of saying it because we have had opinions from outside sources who disagree with that assessment, right? But again, looking at the definitions and talking to our staff about our transit system that we have and the frequency, which is another key component to it, the frequency has to be every, at least every 15 minutes, we do not meet those standards.
Okay, now, there's also another modifier in some of the, some of the codes, the new codes, having to do with objective standards and those types of things. Now, last year, I believe we put into effect new objective standards at the council. Can you go a little bit into some of the, how the nuances might work between what our objective standards are and how these new codes might interact with them?
I take that, I'll let Mr. Holt talk about this as well. But I will say initially that we have adopted our city objective standards and that's what we are applying. And the codes do say, does the city have objective standards? If the answer is yes, then we're looking at, we are applying those. That's how we've changed it.
Yeah, I would basically echo that. I mean, the primary purpose of adopting those objective standards, we're in response to laws such as SB 35, SB 330, that mention the objective standards. And as Patrick went over, much of the legislation keeps referencing objective standards as the tool for our evaluation. So, you know, the adoption of what we did this past year was primarily for that intent, to address these bills or projects that come in using these bills as far as our evaluation against the projects.
If I could just add one thing, just one caveat to that is that, yes, we have our objective development standards, but to the extent the legislation is very clear on one of our objective standards and, and this new piece of legislation conflicts with that objective standards, maybe it's a setback standard or something like that, we would have to comply with the state law provision.
Yeah, I remember the discussion on that. In no way do I want our objective standards to hinder development of needed residential. But I just wanted to see if there's, get some clarification on which has privacy, unless, what you're saying, unless it's specifically spelled out in any one of these laws?
Unless it's specific to that type of a standard.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick follow-up on the pair of ADU bills again. I thought of a concern around this. In 2021, we don't have the 22 stats yet, but in 2021, it is a popular concept, fully 80% of all the building permits issued in the city were for ADUs. But 100% of those were in the above moderate income category. And if I understand correctly, this new set of bills increases the size of permissible ADUs. In general, not always, but in general, a larger structure is a more expensive structure to build. So with that preamble, my question is, is there anything in this pair of bills that will make ADUs more affordable or provide, increase the supply of affordable housing, ADUs or otherwise?
I'd have to go through them page by page and lie by lie, but I will say this, that one of the incentives that you've seen a common theme of is, is about parking, right? And parking is a cost to development. And so for these ADUs increasing, one of those tangents or elements to it is that you have to be within a certain proximity, usually it's a half mile walking distance to a bus stop. And so I think that is part of the plan is that they are saying, we're going to eliminate some of the costs that you might experience typically as a builder, such as parking, for example. Or you might have a limitation on the setback, for example. They've kind of changed those numbers a little bit too. So I see what you're saying. I understand what you're saying. It seems like they're growing bigger. I think the plan is that if you build a little bit bigger, you can have two families there or two more individuals living in an ADU typical than a, than a, the old standard that we would have, which is, you know.
If I could just add to that, and maybe Ian, you can correct me, I could be wrong on this, but I believe that the designation for them as being all above moderate is because it has nothing to do with us knowing what rents are charged. It could be for a family member, but unless there's a recorded deed restriction or some other affordability provision in it, we are precluded from identifying it as a lower income unit. That was my recollection, but I could be wrong.
I seem to remember something as well about covenants, that anything below above moderate required covenants over some long period of time.
We are not allowed to include them unless we have some type of proof. And so they're deemed above moderate, I believe. But Ian, I'm going to turn over, you're the expert.
Sure. Generally, I mean, the ADUs, yeah, they do fall in the above moderate or the market rate category. And that's because as a single-family property, you don't typically even enter into some level of deed restriction on an individual unit for a homeowner because then they, you know, have to go through that process. A lot of the ADU bills are, I mean, it's really production-based. That's the intent. I mean, it's kind of silent on requiring cities to make them affordable. It's just more of increasing the supply and then the variety of housing is, by default, helping affordability in general, but it's not a restricted aspect. Now, I mean, as part of the housing element, there will be incentives in education as far as homeowners or people going through the ADU process and ways that we can maybe incentivize them to do some of the more deed-restricted affordable housings. But again, it's really just that, incentives. It's not anything that we can require. Now, I mean, there are, as part of the housing element and what SCAG has adopted, they have adopted, you know, certain ranges. So we can possibly consider, you know, as far as how we project out the production of ADUs, a certain level of affordability. But then at the same time, we have to commit to incentivizing them and really following through and trying to get people to do those deed-restriction units, so.
And as you say, the bills themselves are silent on the question of affordability.
Correct. I mean, yeah, all the bills, I mean, you know, SB 9, it does not have a requirement to create affordable housing. So it's, I mean, most of the bills are production-based.
Great. That was my question. Thank you.
And just to put a final point on that, I mean, that's one of the things we consistently share with the league of California cities and otherwise, that, you know, we're not, we're getting a lot of regulations, we're not getting a lot of specifics as it relates to that. And they will come back and say, well, you know, we're going to change this law to allow you to, to get rid of front yard setback if you can't do 800 feet anywhere else in their ideas. Well, then you don't have to crane a unit over the back. But I think one of the things we've seen anecdotally and just from conversations around town, we have to classify them all as above market. But in many cases, they, in these days, are resulting in daughters and sons coming back in and living at home, probably rent-free to a regard. And so that's, that is, in the conversations at the counter that I've witnessed down there and otherwise, that's a lot of, a lot of what we're seeing. So I think that is being achieved to some degree.
Thank you. Mr. Powers? If no one else has any other questions, I have some. Staff, I'm not sure who to direct this to, so feel free to step in. Seven of them. One is AB 2011. If we look at option one, it says 100% low income. And 100% low income, in my understanding, is that they pay what would be below-market rent. And that's usually below the cost of construction or profit margin. How does Sacramento expect a developer to come in and put in 100% development that is low income? Any thoughts?
Could be nonprofit type of build a complex, or it could also be just the fact that they have so many units. For example, in maybe 2011, you can have this option where you can build higher, right? And build more. And so it pencils out when you have so many more with a density bonus that you might be able to add, maybe less expenses in the development of it because of the various incentives that they receive or the waivers that they receive. So there is some possibilities where they might receive some type of tax credit in building these type of things. So those are options that we, I think I would see as possible.
That would make it pencil out. So let's deal with the density bonuses. Could you please describe for me, how does the 50% very low-income units, what does that look like with the 50% density bonus? Could you explain that to me? Give me an example.
Sure. So if you look at a, and I may need some help with the math, but if you look at a project that's, for example, three acres and it's 30 units per acre, that's 90 units for that, for that parcel, right? And they're going to build, they're going to build based on the 90 units, they're going to make 15% of those units very low-income units. So with that, they now get a density bonus of 50% to that number. So now they're building...
90 plus 45?
90 plus 45, right.
Okay, 135?
Right. So they built in 135 units. So they're actually now having those extra 50% of units at market rate while they have the 15% as very low income.
So even though we say 30 units per acre, they're actually making it 30% plus, or 30 units per acre plus another 50% or 45? So we're increasing the density and making more, more people in a smaller area?
Appreciate your wording, but their wording is they're clarifying that the density that you, you calculate is based on the acres, the units per acre that you have, not that the bonus doesn't count.
And just to let you know, that's, that's how the city, our city has always done.
That is correct.
The new state law is clarifying it because there are some cities that do their zoning on form-based codes or other types of zoning standards that there leaves room for ambiguity. The way that we have always calculated is precisely what this new state law says. There's, there's no change in that from our perspective. The biggest change under the density bonus law is, again, the additional incentives for the 100% affordable housing.
Okay.
That's the biggest change.
Third question is that if we look at 33 feet increase in height and then they're saying no parking standards, they're assuming people are going to walk to some sort of bus stop or train or helicopter pad that will get them to where they need to go for work. Yet we have a transit system here in California that if we have, one of the homeowners lives in or works in Camarillo, the other one works in Burbank, and a bus system that'll take them two or three hours to get there and two or three hours to get back. The assumption, what I'm hearing from you, is that because they're close to a transit hub, they're able to walk to it and use the transit, when in fact, that's not practical in the world that we have of people trying to get to work that may be a long distance away. Is that the intent of what they're trying to do is force people to start taking the bus and think they will live closer to the hubs?
So I will say that, as we've repeatedly said in the past, when we talk about these state laws that come down, you have a state legislature that's looking at the state as a whole. And these legislators are creating laws that are broad-based, right? They're not, they're not for Thousand Oaks. They are applied statewide. So you look at cities such as San Francisco, Los Angeles, San Diego, maybe San Jose, the Bay Area, some of those cities that have light rail systems through the city. They're looking at those as a component of building up and not having parking requirements. And that you would see that happening in cities such as San Jose. Again, right now, I will say that we don't qualify under the definition as I read it. So that's an important part that we would have. But again, if you meet these elements, and again, there's many of them, I just did the highlights of them frankly, but if you meet these elements, yes, this is why, this is why it's incentive, right? This is why they're, they're saying, build this and we're going to allow you to say no parking or limited parking in some situations, right? And that's why they're doing that. So those are the factors.
And at least for this round of legislation, it is specifically defined. It's a specific, you know, term of art, what is it? A, a major transit stop. So it's not any bus stop, at least at this point.
And I will just add to it, I think it's important to also look at the practicality of it. In San Jose, it may make sense. Yeah, maybe you don't have a car. In Thousand Oaks, the market viability of your project is going to be severely impacted if you try to design it with no parking. People are not going to want to live there. And so I, that's, I just try to look at, from that, that standpoint, sure, could they? And could, you know, we would, you know, have a lot of dialogue back and forth, but I don't see it as, yeah, I certainly see it being leveraged in Bay Area cities, maybe in San Diego and in cities where that makes sense, probably, just like SB 9, probably less so here.
What I envision is that they will, in a city like Thousand Oaks, a mid-sized city or a small city, is that this project goes in 100%, no parking whatsoever, and that the city is looked at as part of, well, why don't you put a parking lot next door? Because the assumption from Sacramento is that people don't have vehicles, they don't need to do that because they're next to a transit hub. That's not reality. That's not going to happen. And to your point, Mr. Powers, I agree. Next question for you, I may have to defer to our fire expert here. If I understand, AB 2221, it says no setbacks? Does that mean you can build directly up to the property line? Is that what I'm hearing or no?
No, so just the way that they wrote this, there are required setbacks. It was five feet, now it's four feet for side and backyard setbacks. What this law does, what are the changes that they do is they say that they need to be able to build an 800 square foot ADU on the property. So if you cannot build it in the backyard, for example... So if you cannot build it in the backyard, for example, but there is room in the front yard that would meet this requirement, that is something that they would set aside the front yard setbacks. Right now, for example, typically in residential, it's a 20-foot front yard setback, right? So that's kind of how they're addressing it, or open space. So you look at open space, for example, that might be a, a, a deck or a balcony of some kind. We consider that open space in some situations. So it's that type of situation where they're saying, hey, we're going to make you build an ADU or allow the city, we're going to make the city allow an ADU of 800 square feet if they can't fit it perfectly in the backyard, for example. Again, I mean very high level here as an example, because you can have all kinds of hypotheticals. But that is, I think, what they're doing with that. They're giving these options, if you can't do it there, we're, we're going to make sure that you, if you can put it somewhere else in the, in the yard or the area, then we're going to make you do that or allow you to have that happen.
Very good. My sixth question is that we are looking at prevailing wage in AB 2668, SB 35, and AB 2011. And for the people at home, prevailing wage is actually Sacramento telling the developer how much to pay people to work on a project. When I speak to developers who develop schools, public buildings and so forth, they communicate to me that it is usually three times more expensive to have prevailing wage for what they pay the workers than if they would do it on the open market. So those two bills are compelling us as a city to accept prevailing wage as a, as a requirement of the development, which drives up the price of the development, which drives up the price of renting those units, when Sacramento is trying to increase housing development and make it affordable, which is exactly opposite by requiring prevailing wage. What are your thoughts on that?
So you mentioned public works or public projects, so when we have a public works project, we do pay prevailing wage. Again, for the public, this is a wage that the director of the, of the industrial relations, they set for each area. And so it is typical union wages, a lot of times generally people talk about union wages or prevailing wages. There is a component to ensuring that there is a, a piece of that number that goes to continual training for journeymen and continual training for apprenticeships, that's part of this program. There's also certified payroll that they have to follow. So to your point, there are a number of requirements for it, but yes, overall, it is a, a set wage that is definitely higher than you would say maybe just out in the public. I agree with that statement. But again, this is again, a process to incentivize, but also to get workforce there too to build it, right? So that's one of the other challenges that you might have is getting the workforce to, to build it and find the workforce to do that.
So I've been told by developers that they're paying, for example, $37 an hour for a person to push a broom. Not a high-skill job, something that doesn't require much training, anyone can do it, $37 an hour. And this is going back about five years when I was quoted that amount. So I just, as a thought. Next.
If I could just, just a couple of thoughts, is that, you know, most, you got to remember also that when, you know, legislators are contemplating bills, obviously there's a lot of competing interests. And obviously, in these cases, you have a lot of labor organizations that are meeting with the legislators and negotiating provisions into it. And so that's most of the reason why you see that. But I think what Sacramento is saying with these bills is that if a developer wants to take advantage of a streamlined or ministerial development process as opposed to a discretionary entitlement process which has significant costs in and of themselves, then they have to pay prevailing wages. So I, that's my guess as to it, that's how I read the legislation, so take that for what it's worth.
I appreciate the thoughts. I look at as another way in which Sacramento intent is good to provide affordable housing, but because of the legislation and prevailing wage, they're now driving it up to making it not affordable. Anyways, those are my last questions for, for staff. So let's do the following, if we can move into public comment, but I'm not seeing any one signed up. So Madam Clerk, no one for public comment at this point? Terrific. Would staff like to comment? No one? All right, so I have a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Yes, so moved. Madam Clerk, take your pick with who you want to have as the motion on that one.
You tell me. Mr. Adam?
Let's do, no, let's do Mr. Engler, because Mr. Adam had the one previously.
Okay.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Engler?
Yes.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Yes.
And Mayor McNamee?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
As Mayor, I've got the responsibility of creating our annual city committee commission assignment list. And in your packet to my council members' consideration for 2023 list, I strive for balance and your expertise in the various areas. And I think we've, with city manager's help, I think we've done a pretty decent job based on your expertise and interests. I'm looking for a motion to accept that list.
Yes, I'd move to accept the list. Looks like we're getting to work here.
With that, did you have a question, Mr. Newman, before we do the motion, or were you looking to make the motion?
Both. I am. I'm, I'm happy to defer to my colleague, Mr. Engler, on the motion. Really, I had more of a comment. I'm, I'm overall very pleased with the committee assignments. I thank city manager and, and you, Mr. Mayor, for dividing up the labor so nicely. The comment there is a, is a question I got from a couple of our residents who noticed that the ad hoc committee on homelessness has gone away, and they, they're, they're dismayed, they were dismayed by that and saying, so that means you're going to stop working on homelessness. And I just wanted to reassure, as long as I'm sitting in this chair, and I'm, I'm only speaking for myself, but I'm sure others may, I see, I see some other nodding heads here, this is not going away. Ad hoc committees are set up with, usually with a finite lifetime, they're set up to do specific things. But I, I just want to point out that this council, every year revisits its priorities, and the number one priority this year is addressing homelessness. And there are three specific action items under that. The 77-unit project at, at Quality Inn, which we are standing up, we've already broken ground on. The Navigation Center out in Newbury Park, Rancho Caneo area, which, which is also in process. And then the third point is exploring other partnerships to support homeless services. And no one, no one is suggesting homelessness has gone away or is done or we've solved it or anything like that. We're not saying that. And it's, I'm, I'm sure many of us have thought about our homeless neighbors these past few days in the cold and the rain, and they are still there and we are still working on that, and that will continue. So I just wanted to make that point about what, what's reflected there.
Thank you, Mr. Newman. Mr. Powers has a comment.
It's a, and it's a good one, Councilmember Newman, and I think the public can sometimes misread those things. Actually, the work of the, on homelessness, as you mentioned, is a top council priority will continue to be so, and it, it now becomes even more so the work of the entirety of the five. The ad hoc committees are a tool, a vehicle that's, the state allows utilization for, in certain circumstances, for two members of a body to work. And in this case, these, these groups meet and they usually deal with highly sensitive issues. And so in this case, there was a lot of contract negotiation that occurred. Those contract negotiations can't, can't easily happen in an, in an environment like this on the dais. So in this case, we were very fortunate in the last year with two major successes. The Quality Inn you referenced, the Navigation Center, which is advancing forward. We have council actions that will move forward on the exclusive negotiating agreement for that, Lawrence Drive site that'll be coming up in the next few meetings, in fact. So you were correct in assuming, and the public's correct in assuming, that there will continue to be items, and we can, we have a lot of work left to do as we, as we move forward to get these facilities open. We'd love to have the Lawrence Drive facility up and running if we could before we get into the next rainy season next year, so that our folks that are out in the field are not out having to notify encampments in advance of big rains like we did over the last few days.
Thank you, Mr. Power. We have a motion on the floor with Mr. Engler. One more comment, yes, Mr. Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The council is definitely concerned about the future when it comes to homelessness, and that's evidenced by the fact that when we voted for the 30 units at the Navigation Center for the modular housing, we also voted to be able to expand up to 50 as needed, and I suspect that will be needed. So we're thinking about the future.
Definitely on our minds. Any other comments before we move the...
Yeah, just real quickly, I want to tag along a little bit with, with Councilmember Newman had said, is that because we, in the, in the past three or four years, the homeless committee, the ad hoc committee was able to move things forward to where we are now, that does not mean that one, that we're done with the job, but that as Mr. Powers says, we are now as a group approaching it. We all embrace the idea that we need to take active steps to address homelessness and to, to help those who are unhoused now. The fact that the committee dissolved and is now resident with the entire council does not preclude us from taking further action.
Thank you, Mr. Engler. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, third time's the charm, please call the vote.
Councilmember Engler? Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Yes.
And Mayor McNamee?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. We will turn this over to our city manager, Drew Powers, for any announcements and upcoming issues.
Thanks so much, Mayor McNamee. We will have another meeting in two weeks, on the 24th of January. Right now, we have a special presentation announcing our One City, One Book program for the year ahead. We actually have two public hearings currently slated for that evening. One, a municipal code amendment relating to columbariums for a religious use, I believe, and then a, a zone change over on Crescent Way, the former Mana, Mana facility on Crescent Way. We also anticipate having exclusive negotiating agreement returning to council for the Hillcrest property, along with, depending on how interviews go, the potential of the planning commission and traffic transportation commission appointments. That's what we have currently slated for the 24th. Hope everyone has a wonderful evening.
Before we adjourn, I would like to officially welcome Councilmember Mikey Taylor, Mr. David Newman. I look forward to your insights, your energy and enthusiasm here to bring solutions to the city of Thousand Oaks. Welcome. Until then, we adjourn until our regular meeting, January 24th. We're adjourned.